So I guess we'll get started. This is the regularly scheduled July meeting for the Finance Committee for the town, but we decided to repurpose it and this is a joint workshop of the Finance Committees for the town as well as the school board. So the format is very informal and I think we thought this would be more of a discussion as opposed to a presentation and a way for us to look back on what was accomplished in the past budget cycle and to try to think through what worked and what we'd like to continue and what we'd like to stop and some of the things we might try to do differently next round. So I don't know if there are any questions. I thought we'd go around at least just do introductions so everybody knows, you know, who everyone is. So Don Handel, Chair of the Town Finance Committee.
Peter Hayes, Chair of the Council, glad we're doing this. First time ever we've done a summer sort of pre-planning of the budget. It's a great thing.
We look better on camera with tan this summer.
Everybody smiling.
Katie Foley, Town Council.
John Coote, Town Council.
Paul Holt, Town Manager.
Kate Bolton, Business Manager for the School Department.
Paul Johnson, Town Council.
April Sider, School Board.
Sarah Leighton, School Board.
Larissa Croft, Assistant Town Manager.
Ruth Porter, Finance Director.
Gina Klukey, Deputy Finance Director.
Great. Thanks, everyone. And we will have an opportunity for a public comment before we wrap things up, so Steve.
Steve, do you have a copy of what we're looking at? If not, John, do you mind just handing him? Thank you.
So with that, we have a handout and we also have some slides. Happy to have anyone lead off in terms of the discussion, beginning with, you know, what went well, you know, starting with the positives. What have we been doing well in the past round of?
Maybe we'll just do a little bit brief interaction from our end because as you guys can see, we really have gone through this debrief process as a school board finance committee. So last Wednesday, April, Alicia and Kate and I all met and we followed the start-stop-continue format. So a lot of what you'll see on here for the majority of it is very specific to the school budget development process, but there are some takeaways in there that I think are relevant for the work that we do with you guys, with the council as a joint committee as well. So that's just some background as to where this came from and I think, you know, we'll pull out the highlights to share with you, but really interested to hear what you guys have to say as well.
So how'd you like to do this? You want to do it randomly or you want it rather than we kind of do, you know, one at a time?
My recommendation and anyone's free to disagree and how I've seen it work in the past is we just keep it by category. So we choose a start or sorry, you know, maybe start with what worked well that we want to continue so to continue and then go start and stop after that.
Great. So.
Maybe a suggestion might be I know each chair kind of solicited feedback and that's always seen in the slides, maybe just kind of a sum, each category a summary of what was pulled out as you say and then that will be a framework for additional conversation and comments.
We can add to it.
Terrific. Was it your coin toss or you?
Arm wrestle. Yeah. Sarah's going to win. That's good. Okay, so cool. So if we start with the continue, so one thing that, and I'll skip some again that are really just more specific to the school, but the very first bullet I think is relevant for everyone to hear and part of the budget development process from the school is that we have two half-day sessions with the leadership council and we're in, you know, the big room and everyone's there, the entire school leadership and the entire school board and it's really the first time that we're getting a copy of the full budget book and each department head will go through, each department head and building leader will go through their budget and it really gives us a good opportunity to understand what the needs are, what the priorities are for the year, but also to ask questions. And I think one of the takeaways that we had was we weren't really sure where our role was this year and being our first year, but now having gone through that, not only do we think it would potentially be valuable for, definitely valuable for the board to do it, but we'd also like to see some participation from the council if you guys are interested because you'll get no better opportunity to really truly understand the budget than that session and be able to ask questions to the people who aren't putting it together themselves.
Do you recall like what month that took place in? I don't need a date. It was in April.
The first of April, it was two days.
It was the same week as the first reading.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, that's wrong. The presentation.
Is it public?
Yep.
Okay.
Budget book, great, want to continue doing that. You know, one of the things that we, that came specifically from our chair was advocating for items of high value, so really fought for things that we wanted to keep in, which I think we did successfully this year. One thing that Kate and Julie did this year, which is different, which I think was new, this was the first year they did it, was they went around to each of the schools in like, I want to see. January. January timeframe and they met with teachers and staff and just, it was a listening session so they could just share.
I'm wrong, it was actually December because it was right before the first break.
You're right. And so they just listened to them. What's important to you, what are you concerned about, what did you have as a resource this year that worked really well and they cataloged all those notes and then that again helped inform the budget cycle. So that's happening, you know, pretty early on when you think of a whole cycle. We didn't start doing this until later. I think you guys do this as a default for all your meetings, but recording all the sessions and trying to have them down here. So we had the first of ours up in upstairs, so we want to continue to do them down here and make sure they're recording and made public. And then one other thing that we did was, which I don't know if you guys do this and maybe something we can adopt as a group, is we created sort of a living document on Excel of all the questions that were received from BOE members and the community members and we have a log of all of that and then all the answers. So we would get questions that came in from different board members at different times and kind of when Kate and Julie were able, they would go in and answer them. So we have that log and it'll also be helpful, I think, from years moving forward because realistically you're getting asked a lot of the same questions here. So those were the big ones. Actually, and I think you guys, you might have a copy of the investment proposal. Hopefully you guys feel the same way, but we felt that this document that Kate and Julie created was one of the more valuable ones and it basically just shows, I think you guys would have gotten a copy of this later on, but it basically just shows, you know, what our level services are and then essentially every investment they're moving forward and kind of where you draw that red line. So continue using this. Anything bad? Kate, anything you want to add to call out for the continuing?
The only thing, the only wonder that I had about that piece and it's something that sort of permeates the whole conversation is that it only shows the school portion. What we tried to do was to be able to chunk out what an investment would do to the bottom line of the school's budget, but of course we then always have to put, you know, an asterisk and say this doesn't mean the tax rate, this means the school's portion of the budget and the impact that we're having on that piece of it. So if there's a way that we can call that out more clearly, I don't know that people were confused by that, but I know in the past there's been some question about, you know, are we talking about the school's bottom line or are we talking about the bottom line as a whole? So for this team, it's important to make sure we're saying that clearly.
Sorry, I have a question. Your fourth bullet, I'm not sure if I heard you mention it, it says same people on Finance Committee and Communications.
Yeah, so April and I are both on the Finance Committee as well as the Communications Committee, which we found to be valuable just in terms of making sure information is consistently shared.
So the suggestion is that the membership is the same, not that the same members this past year should be the members next year.
Right, correct, correct.
Right. We found, board specific, we found value in people who were also on Finance being on Communications and so we'd like to see the overlap continue.
Absolutely, and I also ended up attending quite a few of the Communications meetings just because, you're right, that's what we're talking about a great deal of the time, so that was really helpful.
And the other alternative to that would be having Communications Committee meet with Finance Committee, you know, if we didn't have that overlap because what we found as a board is, and I don't know if the Town Council has something, has similar obstacles, is people tend to assume that Communications Committee knows what needs to be communicated and if you're not on the Finance Committee and you're on Communications, you're not necessarily, you know, aware week by week what needs to be being pushed out, you know, and especially because the school board does use social media and, you know, quick little gotcha grab kind of infographics and things so frequently.
And we have Larissa.
Right, and we do not.
So at the very least overlap, if not?
Yes. Right, it's not three for three. So Sarah and I overlap, but Alicia is on Finance and Hillary is on Communications.
It did feel like you guys had a well-thought-out Communications plan this year where, you know, information was coming out, looked like in a well-thought-out way, spaced.
Primarily.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, thank you for that feedback.
So do we want questions? Only question I had, I'm going to agree with your first bullet about attending the workshops. Is there any flexibility around scheduling and stuff?
So, right, of course.
In the middle of the business day becomes.
Of course, and so the problem, the obstacle, I shouldn't say problem, is that because it's such a big group, I mean, it's 30 people, district employees, you know, but it really needs to be in the middle of the day and not only that, it's two five-hour sessions.
We did have one insignificant.
Later, I think it started later.
The first one was in the morning, the second one was in the afternoon or vice versa. But yeah.
But for some of us that are trying to juggle career, it's either start of the day or end of the day that bleeds over a little bit, a little easier, but if it is televised, it's also a way to tap in.
Well, yeah, and if we're able to record it and we make it clear that folks are able to access that.
Historically not recorded that one, is that right?
It was this year.
It was?
It was.
Yeah, we did do that. And we've been trying to sort of make use of the recordings when we can. Yeah, I hear you, Peter, I think you've actually been to that workshop in the past.
That's when I was actually retired. I actually had time.
When you were pretending you weren't working.
What else, pretending I wasn't working.
But you're right, I mean, it's, and it's something we can certainly talk about.
So what it's worth, I just think, and for people to attend to, I know, I know you've got your constraints on their day too, but if it is possible to make that, you know, that video readily available, let people know, I think that'd be helpful, that at least allow us to tap in when we can.
At the very least, maybe just sending out a reminder after we've had it to those who weren't able to be there and say, hey, we did this great thing, spend a few minutes and with a link to the video. Spend a few minutes, it's only 10 hours.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions so far on the continues?
Yeah, I just, I would echo the living document that the school board used. I attended a couple of the Finance Committees on their end and it was incredibly helpful to, in fact, I had asked some questions and somebody just said, oh, well, that question's been asked four times and here's our living document. So I think it would be a fantastic idea to combine those between the two entities and have that in one place. I think it's also good for members of the public that have specific questions for them to have a very specific place that it's getting answered. And with Google Drive and our groups, I think it also allows the staff the flexibility of answering that when they have the time. So it's not necessarily an on-the-spot 30-second answer, they can actually formulate something a little more thoughtful and keep it in one place instead of just an individual email back to a constituent. So this was incredibly helpful for me as somebody that popped in and out on the Finance Committee.
And one of the things we had discussed at our committee level was having a link to that document available on the budget portal.
Yep.
One of the things I thought of as the historian of this project, with a few of my friends here, was that we did a lot of that kind of work when we did the budget forums a few years ago, where we made the commitment that we would create a document and those documents for the years that we did that were, you know, maybe close to 20 pages of Q and A and obviously not all of those questions are going to resonate today, but a lot of them do, a lot of the same things come up year after year. So it was kind of in the back of my mind to maybe go back even and pull out some of the questions that we had in the past and add that in if we're creating some kind of an archive that people can use.
Yeah, I would, you know, reinforce the point folks have made about the need for us to have sort of a, an aligned process. I mean, I struggled trying to find out where each group was at various points and, you know, I'm supposed to be one of the, you know, more informed folks on the whole thing and I, so I was kind of hunting and chasing and I think if that's something that we were able to take both committees through in unison and have better cadence on it, it would also make us more effective connecting and communicating with the public.
And have it all in one spot.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the detail, I think people, great detail and we've done it, as Kate mentioned, we've, you know, those answers and the questions were a pretty, you know, pretty good record, pretty detailed record. Any other thoughts in terms of, you know, so far what the school board has shared with us? And, you know, our comments I think are not quite as detailed and in some ways I think our process was, was calendar-driven and we came together in key meetings, but we didn't have the kind of the running flow like you described and the overlap with Communications and Finance that I thought, you know, it's clear that you had a, you know, really good thread and, you know, it was smooth moving through it. I felt we had times where we were, you know, lurching from key meeting to key meeting and there were some stops and starts along the way. So, Joe, we go through the town side now and I kind of restated the, you know, the categories here. So in our continues, we called what worked and I thought I'd rely on Peter and Paul to help me with this, you know, or is I think a little bit, a little bit higher level. But the first one was there seemed to be fairly good support for the fact that we had set a goal and achieved it. We set a goal at the outset and achieved it. Now, we've had a controversy around that in terms of how it unfolded, but I think this season there was a feeling that we were, you know, we set a goal for 3% and we said we were going to do it prior to the impact of the reeval and we held to that. And, you know, we were driving parties to try to make sure that, you know, that we executed on that. You know, we'll get into kind of the flip side of that, but I think there was a, you know, good feeling that we had, you know, we were clear about it and there was some continuity, there was fairly good continuity with the focus on the mill rate, you know, it has its issues, but I think people, it was a familiar metric and one that has served the town pretty well over the past several years, so we'll see how it plays out once the, you know, the revaluations and all the assessments come through, but it was something that was familiar to people even though there's still a fair amount of translation involved for the average citizen, so I don't know, Peter and Paul.
Do you want to comment on each bullet or do you want to?
However you like, yeah, we can go deep on each, yeah.
Well, so the one thing I would say on that, and I agree with the first bullet and yet I also know and recognize that there's ways to improve it and for me, a big piece of that is that we, and we intended to have a joint team-building, goal-setting kind of workshop, but we didn't do that this year. You guys, we put it in the budget for you guys for next year to do that, right? I'm 99% sure we did.
Team-building?
Well, or a combined goal setting so that they would, so for example, the school board wasn't part of our conversations when we talked about not including the reeval, for example, that was just council and.
Right, it began around this table, I think in a joint Finance Committee context, but it's the council that decided.
Right, so what I was just saying, an improvement to that process to me would be to have it be, everybody there for the same conversation right from the get-go.
And actually there's, there were two components to that, one, at least the last couple of years, the Town Council has hired an outside facilitator to bring us together as new members come in to talk about norms and how we're going to do things. We thought about trying to do it together last year, but lots of reasons it didn't happen, but I think is that also what you were referring, we've talked about that, that was your idea.
Yeah, because I think it's related, yeah.
Yeah, that to actually do a team-building exercise as a full body together to try to figure out how we want to work together, what are norms, how do we want to approach the budget season and that type of thing, I think, so with that, you've suggested that for a couple of years and I think that's, I think we did.
And I hope you guys will do that when I'm gone.
And I think we did park some resources, last year was a resource issue. I think we did park some resources this year, so if that was of interest, it could be done as a group.
Did you have a vision for time frame?
Well, I mean, we didn't do a very good job of it last year, that's me, but the intent is to try to do it as soon as after the new, all the new members are in.
So you have an election in November.
Sub-December-ish or at worst case.
I think it'd be great to do right for the holidays, like it's, you're getting together, you're getting to know each other, you're, you know, everyone's fresh and then that way when the new year comes, you're ready to, you know, committees are being formed and assignments have been made and you're hitting the ground running in January. But yeah, certainly this year, the biggest challenge was just we were way behind.
Yeah, the schedules became.
Yeah, and then schedules became more and more of a challenge.
And I think, and then elaborate.
No later than January. December would be ideal, no later than January.
The other piece on the metric, what worked is having a target, what probably didn't work is how we got there, so I think you'll see as we go through this, however, and we had one metric, that may not be the right answer. So I think the process, the suggestion is if we could agree now before numbers come or sometime before the budget season starts about what we want our goal to be, actually being able to deliver on that goal at first read would be a, you know, whatever we agree upon, that would be helpful, was the intent of the conversation.
Some, another thing that people felt, you know, uniformly, that the level of collaboration that we had for this cycle was much improved, that we made an effort to hear the voices from the polar extremes and folks in between, you know, we had one-off discussions with people who were, you know, vocal supporters of the schools, we had detailed conversations with smart taxes folks and other interest groups, you know, hither and yon. So, you know, I think that at the end of it, I don't want to speak for them, but I would be surprised if they, you know, if they felt differently, you know, I think that this was a year where we made an effort to try to hear them, we didn't solve everybody's problems, but at least they had a voice and we worked hard to try to understand what was really behind the various positions and I think that was a first and something that hopefully we can continue on.
And some of those conversations happened between the both bodies, so both bodies were talking to those, so I think that's, that was a little bit of a change that hopefully paid dividends.
Do you guys think that was, so we talk about those conversations, you talk about them in the, like in the meetings that we had established or like budget outreach or are you saying you reach out to? Or are you saying you reach out to these groups?
Yeah, they were offline discussions. They were actually not formal, you know, meetings. There were opportunities for people to speak out, you know, in public comment, which both groups did quite energetically. But there were also, you know, informal offline discussions along the way and various people that served, you know, as intermediaries to try to test ideas and to try to, you know, work at problem-solving on solutions. So, that's, that's something that's kind of hard to advertise and hard to describe exactly, but it was.
More organic than.
Yeah, yeah. It was not formal. Maybe there's an opportunity for us to be more formal with that and for us to go deeper and wider in terms of various groups in the community.
I can just, a second.
No, go, no, you first, John.
No, I was just going to comment that I, I think people felt comfortable coming to you to talk about the issues or concerns that they had with the budget and I think that's a positive and, and something you would probably want to replicate going forward. Not specific to individual groups, but really anybody who's a member of the community should feel like they can come and talk about concerns that they have with the budget. To the extent that you have capacity, then, then members of the council and the school board should be willing to have those conversations.
Yeah, two things to add to that. I think as a compliment to the school board, I think this year, I personally witnessed a lot of one-on-one conversations in this room and I think the school board didn't shy away from, you know, hey, I'll go in the audience and talk to you about our budget and why we're doing it. And I think that goes a long way. I think there's, it's easy to, to remove yourself when perhaps you view things through a different lens and I feel like there's a lot, I mean, I personally witnessed a lot of individual outreach of, hey, if you're sitting in the audience and, and you had a public comment, I'll come up and talk to you. So, I think to your point where one of the things you're trying to articulate is I, I felt like there was a, a group of elected officials that were willing to say, hey, you know, let's meet, or I'll see you at town hall or, you know, and, and instead of, it's an intimidating thing, it's an uncomfortable thing to talk about a lot of times when you're not necessarily eye-to-eye. I feel like a lot of that got stripped away this season, which was a good thing. I think that, I know the budget outreaches weren't exceptionally well-attended, but the one I did attend at the fire station in Dunston, I was pretty impressed with the turnout. I think we, I mean, for that particular one, I feel like we had.
Fifteen.
Yeah, about fifteen evenly split between whatever you want to call it. And I thought that, I feel like a little bit of the walls have been stripped away a little bit where, I mean, there was some good rigorous debate and there wasn't a whole lot of talking past each other. I felt like there was some good communication, so.
Yeah, I thought one thing, building on your point, that helped with those, they were unstructured. You know, we didn't have a big agenda, we didn't have a lot of presentations and material going through. We sat and talked, we sat and heard what was on people's minds and it, you know, went all over the place, but we, you know, we heard from people in terms of what was really top of mind and what were their biggest concerns. So, I think it's important for us to, you know, work at formalizing those channels and being really energetic about working the feedback into the dialogue and the discussion and the work and the work of putting the budget together and moving it along. Yeah, the fourth bullet, I think we kind of touched on it a little bit, increasing the level of civil dialogue. I mean, I think that, you know, we had a tough time with the first reading, you know, not approving the budget as proposed in the first reading, but approving it at a three percent level. And we can talk more about that as we shift to, you know, what we might want to do differently. But I, I thought that the fact that we, it was a lightning rod for me and I think later on in the process, things seemed to go a little bit smoother because we really did the, did the shouting and, you know, had the tough talk on the front end and by the time we got toward the end, we had kind of worked through a lot of those issues. So, I, you know, onward and upward, I think there's big room for improvement, but it's about setting expectations and, and trying to, you know, I, I was very impressed at how both folks on the school and the town side worked energetically trying to answer every single email. You know, I was out of town when all that happened and I was, and the people were going around the clock on that, so.
I was in Disney World when I was doing it, Don, so I don't know where you were, but.
I was just admiring the fireworks.
And I think some of this bullet though got to too, and something we probably could learn from, however we got there, it probably wasn't perfect, but the level of dialogue in the community when it came to be budget time was different. We didn't have dueling signs, we didn't have dueling sort of social media pieces that just, there was a more sort of respectful, if you will, sort of understanding where people were and kind of moving forward. So, how, to me, it was a completely different field when it came time to vote. So, however, how we can get there again, I think would just be a great thing to, to think about.
I think so much of that comes down to us, right?
Yeah.
If we're having a civil dialogue, then it gives people that example.
I think that's absolutely true, yeah.
Keeping that in mind.
And I think also Bill Donovan and Paula Johnson's videos made a pretty big difference.
Clearly.
Yes, clearly, yeah, yeah.
I love those.
They were very successful.
I am like a fangirl of those videos. I love those, I love them.
But that is a great example of sort of other voices.
Yeah, absolutely, right.
Kind of coming together to have that conversation. I think there's some things that we can really just kind of leverage going forward.
Yeah, I say in jest, but I mean.
No, it made difference.
I mean, a lot of, when you're having these conversations, seventy percent of the battle is understanding whatever it's talking about because everybody's judging the budget or what have you on a different merit or a different metric or, or.
Words mean different things.
The more we can speak the same language, the better we all will be, so.
That's a great point.
And the last point here, you know, not to drain the slide completely, but at the end of the process, I think it's fair to say that we funded the basic needs, you know, for, for schools and for the town overall. You know, I, and I know we had, it was a roller coaster ride at times and we had a very tough start with the portables discussion, but we, we stuck with it and we kind of worked it. We worked the issues and, you know, didn't throw in the towel at any point and I think the outcome speaks for itself. So, that's, that's kind of our, you know, our narrative and, you know, Paul and, and Peter and others. Would like to weigh in on that or reject it completely?
Yeah, and I, you know, I want to go back to, I think, what Sarah said. For me, that modeling can't, cannot be understated. So.
Mean up, so.
Us as a collective, as a whole, what we put out there for the way we speak to each other with the way we react to what might seem like crazy and I know everyone thought I was crazy and didn't like the way that, you know, went down and again, we can learn from that, but there were choices points there. Like, it would have been really easy for all the school board to not speak to Katie Foley after that and that didn't happen. In fact, we had many, I had one-on-one conversations with every single person and, you know, being able to, you know, have that kind of respect for each other, even if we don't like the way we went about something is huge, I think, in terms of the kind of community that we want to see. And, and I think that, you know, led to a lot of that other bullet of, you know, I just saw much more positive all around, so.
At this point, I'd like to hear from the town staff. You know, we've kind of talked from a school and a town council standpoint, but I'd love to hear what you, what you felt on continuing, what you'd like to see continuing and what you feel worked this past cycle.
Well, I, I do have an observation on the, the first bullet, I guess. I think it makes entire sense to involve your school colleagues in that much, that, that goal discussion. I think if we start off from right foot, we're certainly going to have a better chance of ending in a good place. I would observe, however, if we're going to do it in late December, no later than mid-January, that I think we need to frankly, to get that out there early. And if the expectation is to meet that goal at first reading, you're setting a goal without any understanding of what the need is. And so, what I encourage you to do is you need to have some flexibility built into that.
Yeah.
You can't foresee the future. We have a sense of where it's going, but those few months are precious between goal-setting and presenting a budget. This year was a prime example on the school side. It's really unique and expensive challenges in front of them with the K-2 enrollment and the special services codes. I suspect those weren't known largely, you know, until the budget development was well underway. So, I'm just observing that if you're going to set a goal early and you want us to meet it at first reading, you're doing it without the benefit or the knowledge of what the need is. And this year, by doing it at the first reading, felt a bit uncomfortable to staff because we hadn't had a chance to tell you what the proposal was and why it was. The other thing I'll just bring up in the context of what worked, because I received positive contact, our, our feedback was the budget document itself. Larissa did a great job of getting feedback, coming up with a refreshed look that light, medium and, you know, full-bodied. And then also the budget portal design was reshaped this year. So, if we could get some feedback that we're in the right direction, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'd like to just interject that the town did a great job responding to feedback, you know, about, you know, offering the different versions and people were quite happy to, you know, go to Staples for the, you know, for the folks that are seeking merit badges on the topic and, you know, for, for others, they had choices, you know.
We've got some Eagle Scouts in town.
So.
I've got another continue, so kind of to play off of the councillor Johnson, councillor Donovan runaway hits. We also, just because I can kind of see on the back end what we have for viewership and we also had a, in the like five to six hundred range of each department head video as well, which I thought was really remarkable, the fact that five hundred people would take the time to listen to our public works director and finance director and community services director talk about specifics of their budget and what was important. And I think that even though, yes, we understand that people are going to vote on the school budget, I think that there is a sense that they're also using that as an opportunity to speak to the municipal budget as well. So, having an opportunity to explain to people and have them see the faces of the senior staff that are charged with building those budgets, I think that that would be something I would like to see continue from a communications standpoint.
It's great. I think we all just look at each other and think we should do that for the school.
Yeah, I thought that was huge.
Yeah.
Very helpful to.
Good to know.
Because that's your, those are your experts and hearing directly from them about, you know, you know, on the fire department, staffing issues he's had for decades. I didn't even know about that, I've flipped here for a decade, so.
No, that came about really because of Larissa's suggestion and more importantly, her persistence. It's uncomfortable for many of us to be in front of a video, but I think we've kind of broken the ice and hopefully we'll be able to continue that, if not expand it.
Were those just posted on Facebook, so that five hundred, yeah?
Yep, those are just from there. And I, just as a, as a soft plug, those were made possible because of an intern that we had doing some communications work for us. Kind of thinking moving forward, whether council wishes to consider communications staff in the future or increasing our intern budget. So, we always have intern staff that can perform those services for us, just as a soft plug.
Very well played.
And the budget season officially begins.
Larissa just threw the first pitch.
I think what I kind of liked is that, yes, they set the goals at the first reading or, or that hard goal, but that at, during the process, there were adjustments that were made and, and I still don't remember where we left off, I've got the printouts. But I mean, you know, we may have still stayed at the three percent, but there were adjustments that were, you know, that the staff didn't feel like, oh, you know, this is it, we're done. So, I thought that was nice.
You know, I've been a, a resident for more decades and I want to admit and I've been through a lot of these processes a long way because I've been with the town thirty years. And actually, this year was, I'd like to commend the school board because I, I really thought you guys, for the first time, more so than ever, I really understood why you were asking for what you were asking for and I thought that was awesome. And, and I, I think I haven't seen the two sides work better together than I did last year.
Thanks. And just from a process standpoint, I'm going to, you know, we normally do a public comment in one, in one shot, but I'm going to turn it over to, you know, to Steve and Larry if you want to comment on what you think worked. If you, if there's anything in that category, I think we all know linear. But if you want to speak to that now or you want to speak at the end, you know, don't mean to put you on the spot, but I know you're not shy of retiring individuals.
Is this the microphone?
Yeah, probably, I think, yeah.
Is my name and address?
Yeah. I think you got to turn the.
So much for informing.
You got to turn the hand, the wand on there.
You're going to speak on my way now.
You got to keep to what, you got to keep to what worked, Larry.
No, give him the option.
It's going to be, it's going to be as quick as public comment is ever given.
Hello?
You're good.
We can hear you, yeah.
I'm Larry Harper, Bud Holmgren. I think as far as a lot of things, the new school board members, the attitude of the new members of the school board made a collateral or major change from the start. Individuals that are willing to talk, to talk to people.
From all sides and I think that's, that was very helpful this year for everyone involved. Katie, she put a voodoo on me this year and maybe calmer and nicer, I guess.
Tried.
Oh, that's it, folks.
We'll give you a chance to speak.
Share my witch doctor thing later.
So, let's, let's go on to what we want to not repeat, stops.
Sure. So, for our stops, we solicited feedback, as Sarah said, we solicited feedback from the school board, not just the finance committee. And so, one of the overall feelings that we got from other board members was that the school committee, the finance committee, needs to stop defending a personal role when we're having some of these hard conversations. And we're going to talk about some strategies and, and kind of as a group collectively work on this because, you know, sometimes, and you guys have personnel where it's one person who fills a certain role, it, it doesn't feel good. It doesn't feel good to have a public conversation about someone's job without making it personal. And so, that was one area, you know, where we felt like a couple of times conversations weren't as productive as they could have been because for us, it became, it became about defending that, that personal role. And then the feedback from board members who were not finance committee members was that the multiple budget outreach meetings, that the participation just wasn't worth the time. And I will speak for myself for a second and say, I actually, I mean, I have the availability and so I don't mind attending multiple sessions and I think I missed the Dunston one and the Wentworth one, but other than that, I tried to attend all of them. And so, for me personally, I don't mind doing the multiple sessions, but we also acknowledge that that is a discussion that we need to have and really look at whether it's, you know, we're getting enough.
Did we have five this year?
We did.
Five, yeah. So, maybe it's a number, maybe it's just reducing.
Well, I think to add to that too, I, we don't have, not everybody has to be involved in those. I mean, I think if, if there's members of the school board and/or town council that are more willing to, to put in more of those meetings, I don't think there's anything wrong with, I, because I know on our end, I felt like we were trying to give two to everybody, I believe it was. You know, hey, if, if councillor Johnson wants to take four because that's his thing, then, you know, let, let people.
Pavez the four.
Well, I failed. But I, I just, I, perhaps you guys had the same dynamic, but I, it struck me that, you know, there's seven people, seven different strengths.
Some may be more available.
Absolutely, if there's two or three people that are, so.
I wondered what, when Don was speaking a little bit to this earlier about trying to find a way to increase those who do attend and, you know, that's a struggle that we've had for years with all the different types of things that we've done in trying to increase outreach to the public is always, you know, if you build it, will they come? And I guess it's a perennial challenge. We've tried changing the times around, we've tried, tried changing the locations around, we've tried having a central place, we've had, tried going out into the community and each of those has their challenges, so I put it out there as a wonder of, you know, is there a better way?
And that was sort of my, that, that's what I raised for me, whether we had the time is, is a different issue that we just didn't get a lot of people in that format. So, really, is that format the best way to reach everybody? And I remember, I can't remember who's, who's the candidate that's run a couple of times, Ben?
Howard.
Ben Howard? I mean, at one point, I mean, it's, it's the millennials, I'm learning that I'm just dated, I'm a dinosaur. But, but he had a comment with technology, geez, if we were available, people could kind of from home, you know, there's technology that they could call in with questions. Because what I've heard a lot from people is we have them in the evening, they're getting home from work, they have kids at home, they have dinners. So, maybe it's a bigger question that we could work on is, we've tried different formats. I don't think we've hit, it sounds like the videos may actually be a more successful way or, I mean, if you reach five hundred with videos, I doubt we had five hundred. way, or, I mean, if you reach five hundred with videos, I doubt we had five hundred in all of these meetings that we did, so.
Could you do a ten?
Four.
Four.
Yeah.
How many unique?
I, so I didn't keep the same sort of records as I kept the year before because the numbers were just so low, but I would estimate that we didn't have more than thirty unique attendees and that would be a high estimate.
I mean, of these.
Of the, of the.
All high.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so it's, I think it's more of a question is, was that the best vehicle? Is there a different way that we can reach them, which probably should be a discussion we can have.
Yep.
Through the summer and fall.
We had talked about doing Facebook Live.
Yeah.
Yeah, making them interactive.
Again, need that intern. So we were pretty.
So those are our stops.
Sure. The stop list.
Great.
I'm not sure when you bring it up, but on the front end, Julie and I have done for two or three years, the listening sessions and.
Right.
Oh, that's true.
I just wonder if people had any comment on whether that's, you think that's productive?
What was your?
I think you'd have the better feedback on that probably. And then I also would wonder about the same question, is it unique attendees?
Not typically, always interesting conversation, it's very informal and we talk about what's on their minds. It doesn't really produce, I guess, the desired result, which is help us inform before we propose the budget, what you like, what you don't like. It's very often very specific questions about one thing or another. I'm pleased to make myself available. I'm inclined to do it again, I'm just wondering if you had any feedback.
Can I also, the first week, this is the second year that they were done, the first year, just like with the neighborhood budget sessions, they were very well attended. The listen to learn sessions of 2018, we had, and it really informed that year's school boards, some of their decisions. We had especially a Tuesday afternoon at two, or noon, I don't remember which town it was, but there was a large group of parents that came to that session. And that session ended up being really about foreign language and music and parking for special needs at school buildings. And it really did inform some of the, the budget that was proposed that year. This year, just like the neighborhood budget meetings, the attendance of those listen to learn sessions in January plummeted and, and we don't know why. They were the same times of day, same multiple locations, they just didn't have the attendance.
I'm inclined to, yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I think those would be valuable too, given that the school has a new superintendent. And so opportunities for him to do those community outreach are gonna be really important.
It'd be a good opportunity for him. And the other thing too is if we're talking about technology, again, maybe filming those sessions so that other people can weigh in. And one of the other pieces that we've talked about is having some type of way for people to give feedback electronically outside of those, you know, single meetings or one-time events. And, you know, that's a little bit harder to manage, we need the, we need three interns for that one, but, you know, it's all, it's all part of making things accessible.
Yeah, despite the low attendance of these, there may be some value in the effort that's put forth and people acknowledge that we're, we're making the effort. I can't say that that's exactly the case, but it certainly can't hurt to demonstrate that we've held, you know, kind of listed the things that we've done in the process probably has some value.
I appreciated the opportunity to, to sit down with you guys and it, like you said, it's an intimate session, so I think there's maybe seven or eight people at the one that I went to, but you, you really get to, get a better feel for what's going on in the town and, and sharing your feedback on what we should and shouldn't do. And I don't know that there was a lot of translation from what was said in the meeting to what made it to the budget, at least for the ones that, that I went to, but I appreciated the opportunity to, to meet you guys and speak with you guys.
Well, and I said this at communications a couple of meetings ago, it's not always about the widest net. I mean, I mean, it's, I, I feel like a lot of times with these communication efforts, we judge the success on how many people. Well, sometimes it's really about getting stakeholders or people that are gonna talk to their friends or talk to their friends' friends, like that influences are okay to sit down with too. So I mean, it's not the success of these, granted, we'd all want a hundred people in the, in the room, but the success isn't necessarily if, if the net caught the most. Sometimes it's, it's really about the value and the, the quality of the conversations, so.
Great. On, on our view here, what didn't go so well, you know, was the mill rate thing was sort of a double edged sword, you know, good on the one hand, but relying on one metric and one that's complicated and was still, everyone needs a decoder ring, you know, to figure out what it really means. We didn't really feel we got into a full consideration of long range issues and, and addressing the debt burden. I mean, I think that we, you know, the, the dead load went up, you know, we kind of hit the number, but it wasn't pretty the way we got there. You know, it sounds like how a lot of times companies achieve orderly results, you know, it's not, it's not a sustainable model, you know, so we, we need to do better on that score. I'm gonna run through all of these so that we can kind of follow, you know, direct, go back and address the ones that people, you know, wanna draw, drill deeper on. We talked about the neighborhood meetings and the poor attendance, I think that we've, you know, gone through that in some length. And it was kind of the same, you know, it was the usual suspects at each meeting, so it's more, it ended up being more like a club than a, you know, a neighborhood meeting at times. So delivering the one budget that didn't meet the stated goal at the first read, you know, we talked about that being, you know, a break, you know, breaking event, you know, you know, and it took us a fair amount of time, I think, to redirect it back on track after that. But finally, I, I, we had, I think, high hopes for the collaboration between the council and the school board. I think we made some great strides, but I think it still fell short of expectations and potential at committee level. And I, you know, I, I feel personally that that was, you know, more, you know, a fault of, of us on the town side. We didn't really have as much robust activity. We had a calendar that was sort of, we did a lot of stops and starts and we weren't really clear at times at some, some of the meetings, what we're trying to accomplish at that meeting. You know, we kind of, we, you know, we addressed it at the last moment, we, and, and that made it tougher. So I think there's great opportunity there, a nice start, but I think we, we could have done a lot more with that and can do a lot more going forward, so. That, that's the quick run through on, you know, what didn't work so well from town view. You know, I'd be happy to hear from others as well, town staff, or, you know, dive deeper on any of those.
You know, actually, I think from my perspective, a little detail around the debt burden piece, there really was more of, especially where we find ourselves, we have a situation of what are the investments that are looming in front of us as a town? We have the portable trailers that, you know, we had conversations about, but there's a primary school coming, there's a library expansion coming, there's new turf. So, but I don't think we've still done a really good job before the budget even, even starts, to really try to look ahead and say, what are the big budget items that are coming? And that's really important because looking ahead to what our debt service is and where we may have peaks and valleys in the debt service so that we could layer something in and not impact the budget, it's all about timing. And I still think we have a, we really don't have a good handle of what those, I mean, we're at a hundred million or so in debt and we're looking at probably another hundred million that's on the next five years. That, so it's doubling the debt burden. That's something that we really should have lots of conversation about before we even get to the budget. That'd be a great thing to do in the off season, if you will, is really think about, how can we push this out? How can we move things along? Because each year, we're not really sure where those things are gonna be. I mean, the library and the school may end up on the same referendum in the same year, it might not, but those would be critical things to kind of start to plan for now. So that, that was sort of the conversation around the debt. It's more the strategic planning of a business model about when can we take on debt, when we can't take on debt, how do we do it so it doesn't impact our bond ratings? It, it's that conversation we really haven't had collaboratively, but I think it'd be helpful.
A couple of things. So, one, I think we missed one really big continue for me anyway, and I wanted to make sure we get it down, is that having the, the budget to us a week ahead of time before the first reading was huge. It was the first, for me, I, I always felt, and I just remember my first year as councillor going, I got this, I haven't even seen it and I'm supposed to approve it. And that just never felt right to me. And it still doesn't seem right to me. So I appreciated, I know it put you guys on an extreme fast pace, but I think it's important. One of the things that, for me again, and I don't know exactly how to articulate this, but that came out of a lot of those one-on-one conversations that I had with school board members after the, you know, infamous amendment was simply the alignment of timing and process. So where a lot of school board members feel like, jeez Katie, my biggest concern is, you know, we've been at this for X, Y, Z many months and we've been part of this. And as, as a councillor, if I wasn't on finance committee, you know, the first reading was really my first opportunity to weigh in. And it seems like you, school board members are much more involved earlier and is that something that the council can actually learn and involve all members a lot sooner? So of my three years, I will say, you know, this was, I at least felt like I had a voice. In the first year, I wasn't even allowed to sit at the finance table for a meeting. So I feel like we have made great strides and we have come a long way in changing some of those cultural pieces. You know, is it perfect? No, a long way to go. But I think we could learn from them because if they're feeling, well, we're so far away, how can you change this on us now? And we're feeling like, well, I, this is the first chance I even have to weigh in. Something between our two processes are not well aligned. It's interesting because we do have different roles because the school obviously is a department of the town. So we're sort of cruising along on the timeline that, for example, public safety is or our public works or any of the towns departments and, you know, folding ourselves into the hole that is then brought to the town council. So it's a bit of a shift, I think, for us to think about being more, having more understanding earlier in the process for the council. But I think for this team. We can fit ourselves, like you say, into that process a little bit earlier with Tom and understanding what those departments are working on and moving, working towards before we see a budget.
I mean, a good example that I think is, I think the process we had is, this year we had Tom and Julie kind of present the budget a week before we're gonna have the first reading. But for a lot of us, we had met as a group, but we didn't know even as a joint finance committee, where their numbers, that the one town, one budget? We didn't have a good sense of where the one town, one budget landed. And I don't think town councillors really knew until that day that they were doing the presentation of where it was ending up. So I think what Katie's saying makes a lot of sense, probably before that presentation is done, there, we should build into our schedule that the joint finance committees seize the combined numbers before anything goes public and we have a chance to react, so.
Yeah, because people like surprises like on their birthday and Christmas, right? That's really about it. After that, you're not like, you know, being a part of things and being involved is important.
So somehow, so when we build the budget schedule this year, we should try to build in, and I, I hear Tom, it really gets tough with the timing, but we should sort of generally know where, how big the red box is or isn't.
Yeah, timing is a challenge for me. I don't see all my department requests, including the school, any more than four weeks before presentation. And so there's a lot of machination, a lot of work that's done in those final weeks. So adding in an additional step before presentation will take some, some doing for sure.
Yeah, I mean, I, I thought the purpose, like that was just a kind of, you know, just kind of say, gee, what, what might improve a process and then figure out how to do that's gonna be.
You gotta dream and whether it's realistic or not and figure that out later.
But no, I understand that that is, there are lots of moving parts and it's really difficult, but, but just, just at least the joint finance, not, you know, having that knowledge ahead so we can say, hey, that's, that's good or that's not good or anyway.
And then the, the finance committee could present to their respective boards, you know, during the, like, the council meeting on what they've learned prior to the, the budget being issued or something.
Yeah, but that's been mostly around, what are the drivers, what do we see, but no real specifics, so. Anyway, just as we debrief Larissa's.
So one other observation I had, and this actually just literally happened to me again last week, it was someone in the, I guess, pulled me, that lives in Scarborough, pulled me aside, and there's, there was still a perception that we cut like major positions from the budget. And I, I'm looking at this person and I'm really trying to listen and understand and I'm feeling like we pretty much gave every position almost, not everything, but it was pretty close to all the investment requests that were asked. So how do we celebrate that better? And how do we get that word out better that, look, I, you know, maybe we're not back to where we wanted to be and there's, you know, still some ground to make, but celebrate the, the, the good pieces of it. Because I, that kind of felt like, jeez, I, you know, I felt like we made a lot of significant investments this year and that person's perception was that we cut a lot of positions.
And I think that gets to what we're talking about, our, the language piece. We have conditioned ourselves in this town that if something gets put into the budget as an ask, if it doesn't get granted as a cut to the budget.
Versus an investment.
Usually the word cut means that someone has a position today, their position has been gone. And I don't think there was a single position we eliminated in the budget. There was some ask that we didn't grant in total, but even that language is important.
You know, a lot of these process and timing issues are rooted directly in the charter. So I've heard a conversation around perhaps reopening the charter.
Yeah.
I do have copies of the article five, perhaps I can send them home with you, but just to try to paraphrase a couple of different articles. Essentially, I am tasked with proposing a budget and I think that, that delineation is pretty clear. Presumably, I'm aware of the, the needs of the town side of the affairs and I take the recommendation from the school board, the department of the, of the town. So essentially, the manager starts the conversation based on what he recommends or she recommends as the needs of the, the community in the company area. And then I hand it over to the council and then it's yours very clearly under the charter to review, to amend, to do whatever you will with it. And then he hands it back to me at the end, it's my administrative. So there are very clear delineation of those responsibilities. So changing some of that process, we really be mindful of what the charter says and what it intends. I guess the other thing to keep in mind is that it goes on to say, once I submit the budget to the council, we have sixty days to pass it. So the sooner we start it, you'll have no more time to finish it, if you will.
Say that again. You have to pass it within sixty days.
You have to pass it within sixty days.
So if you define the delivery of the budget to the council at an earlier stage, you still have under the charter sixty days to complete your work.
It seems to make sense to mine of the validation of the scheduled junior primary and so I think, you know, that it has a lot to do with how the schedule is, is derived. It's worth noting that in the events, and I'll read a quote, in the event the town councils fail to develop the budget within said sixty day period, the budget as presented by the manager in the board event should automatically become the budget for the fiscal year.
Same rules of vote down, right? You stick with the old budget?
Slightly different, but it, it's provision. That language is really severe.
Yeah.
And I would dare say, I wasn't here at the drafting of that, but that was purpose. That was to, to really encourage obviously the council to, to take its responsibility seriously and to work for the budget, to do it diligently. And if you don't, there are some pretty severe consequences. So.
So I'm thinking in, in terms of that timeline, I think, Peter, were you the one who said you were a dinosaur? I think, I think I'm like an amoeba or whatever, the next thing down is, but it, in my experience, that having the first reading of something, and, you know, this goes to what we were talking about earlier, Katie, is, is the opportunity for us to lay the object on the table for scrutiny. And so my worry is that if we are setting ourselves a goal that we need at first reading, in some small way, for me, it begins to invalidate the rest of the process. So that's my perspective. I throw it out there for, for comment.
Okay. Others?
Well, I, I think that's because we're always talking in context of a three percent mill rate increase, right? So to me, the way that we do it right now, you're either, it's pretty clear you're the hit or you miss it, right? But if you actually judge something on a series of metrics that is not just a hit or miss, then you can still have those fruitful conversations and you can still have the scrutiny. So if we have five different metrics we're judging this budget on and I don't know what this goal is, I'm not proposing any solutions because we can't propose solutions, but I think a lot of the, the friction that we're experiencing is because what we know as proposed meeting the goal is three percent or not, right? Well, the goal doesn't have to be defined by one number of a mill rate, the goal could be defined by five different metrics and one of them clearly should be. something around the long-range issues with the debt burden. So there's an example. So is the proposal that, for instance, and the way I look at this is, the proposed budget this year, I thought did a pretty solid job of forward-thinking in the debt burden. It had the, it had the, it had the machine, machinery fund in it. It had, it had several things that were not bonded that we were going to pay cash for. And then we took that, we threw that all out the window in order to meet the goal, right? So, so at that point, right there, to me, the budget had high marks for debt burden or it had reasonable marks for debt burden and planning for the future. And it didn't have such great marks for the mill rate, right? So then we ended up trading, trading it off. So in a roundabout way, I guess what I am trying to say is, I think some of this anxiety stems from we're so conditioned that the goal is one metric, do or die, drop dead. Where I think there still could be room for having a goal, a goal that could be met and we could still have scrutiny and, and we could still end up at the, at the end of the process. I don't know what that is yet, but I feel like a lot of our thinking is framed because of.
But metric aside, I think what I'm hearing Kate say, I'll say it for myself, is that the question is whether you meet that goal in day one or you start the conversation, you go through a deliberative process, you do what you do, and I think what matters is where you end. And that's appreciably different.
And that, that is what I'm saying. And the reason I'm saying it the way I am is because it speaks to that timeline and it speaks to the concern of these governing bodies about not having enough information to get to their goal or not having enough information to make a reasonable conclusion about whether they should vote for something or not or support it or not or change it or not.
Can I just speak to one thing about that? So, and I want to try to use like a different example because I think, again, so this is just my three-year experience. So let's take a, a different issue like an ordinance, right? You know, there, my first year on the council, again, I was coached and guided that, well, you just pass it on the first reading because it's going to go, or something's going to get pushed to a committee and the committee is going to fully vet it. And then when it comes back to you, the expectation was, well, it's already been fully vetted, so you can't make an amendment and change it at the second reading. And if you recall, one of my experiences was, was trying to put back in $6,000 for beach raking at, at a second reading. Well, I was, and I'm just, I'm just being very honest and candid here because I think it's important to put this on the table for folks and, and, you know, I felt crucified for asking for $6,000 for beach raking because it was irresponsible, and these are quotes, of a councilor to make an amendment at a second reading when the finance committee's already fully vetted it. So I'm speaking to cultural pieces and how we, and you heard me say earlier, I feel like it's about how we speak to each other, it's about how we, you know, let each other into the process. And again, this year, if I attended a finance meeting, you know, I could very well much provide some input and feel heard, but that wasn't always the case, which is why I kind of formed that opinion the way I did, like, you know, if, because if I, let's just take, and again, if I pass it on the first reading because I'm supposed to let the process unfold.
And then you're not allowed to.
Right. And then I go to make my $1.3 million adjustment at the second reading, guess what happens? Like, so I'm not saying what I, the way we did it was perfect. I'm challenging us to think about always not conforming to, because we've always done it that way. Or, you know, I guess that's, yeah.
It's unfortunate you had that experience, but more times than not, the finance committee comes forward with a fairly substantial set of amendments. But more times than not, there are additional amendments that are offered and accepted beyond that. It's unfortunate you had that experience. I think it's also important to look back at our track record. Even, you know, during the time that we set this, maybe it's the wrong method, but a mill rate related budget goal, we've always been there. We've, we've met it. In fact, we've exceeded it on, on the publications. And what's curious to me is why we did it differently this year and had a far more positive result in polls.
73%, right? Margin of support? Which is the most I can remember on my term or in 10 years.
Something resonated with the voters recently.
Lower turnout.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
I think everyone had wanted to get it in at some point, but.
Yeah, that's okay. Um, thank you. The, it's such a unique position to be in from the school side because none of the other departments of the town have elected officials that represent them. They don't have, you know, a budget process that goes through such a lengthy, you know, and, and very official path, for lack of a better word. The, the significant problem I had this year was with the goal setting and something that I think, you know, we really need to discuss is the school, the school alone, the school department alone cannot meet a 3% increase to the mill rate. When we are developing our budget, we are just a, I mean, we're a very large portion of the budget, but we're only one component of the budget. And so we are working in isolation when we are building our budget. And then we put forward our piece and we've been told that we didn't hit the goal in the past when, we literally can't. I mean, we, we don't, there are too many other variables in play for the school department alone to put forth a budget that we feel confident will or will not result in a 3% increase to the mill rate. And so when we talk about goal setting, you know, if we continue to work forward towards this 3% goal, it's with the acknowledgement, I hope, that the school department really is working in the dark towards that goal. And we don't know until all the pieces start to come together, what the final impact is going to be on the tax rate. And so it's, it's a hard, it's a very difficult position to be in as someone who wants to meet the goal, you know? I'm, I'm, I want to work towards something, I want it to be collaborative, I want it to be honest. But my honest opinion this past cycle or now, and now that we've kind of learned how to do this is, I, I mean, I don't know whether five of our investment proposals is a reasonable thing to put forward or whether 25 of our investment proposals is reasonable until we see, you know, a much bigger picture.
Which is what the intent of the first reading is, is to see that.
Right. And so, thank you. So to bring it kind of full circle from the school side, first reading for us feels more comfortable to kind of just put it all out on the table and say, these are all the things and not worry so much about whether or not we are going to be $1.3 million over or above, you know, a 3% mill rate.
And I was just going to say, we should try to wind up on this, but I want to make sure we allow it at the time at the end for talking about, you know, what we want to start doing and get some input also from the public.
Can I say one quick thing? What did not work for me? I did, so when we compare ourselves to other towns, everyone's turnout's fantastic. Like, you know, when 200, 300 people in a town the same size as ours are showing up for their polls. So we still blow them away. But it is very sad to me that because we didn't have controversy, we didn't have engagement in the turnout and the numbers. And that really, that did hit my heart. And I will tell you, just, it made me sad because I don't, I don't want to live in a town where you have to, you know, throw a dog's suit on a nail in a corner to get people to the polls.
I hear you, Katie.
Although that was fun.
Peter was trapping at the bit.
And I kind of wanted to react to what Tom said, you know, what Kate said. And, and Tom, you wondered why it was different this year? And I think it was different because the problem with the first read, and it was actually in the language of, it creates tension. I think what's happened in the past, let's just, I mean, 3% may not be the right piece. But the problem is, we put out to the community that our goal is the budget's going to come in at X. But if we're sitting around the table and saying, well, we know we really can't do that and we're going to deliver at the first read, X plus five, it is predictable that that group that was expecting that number is going to be up in arms and then we're off to the races. So I think what we're talking about is not solving it tonight and it's not focusing on what the metric is. But if we're going to communicate a goal in January, whatever it is, if it's fair and reasonable, it should be what we deliver the night of the first read in the way I think Tom has done a great job as a town manager. Whatever the goal is, he may not like the goal he got, but he will always deliver that number. But he will always be very clear about, this is what it needs, this is what we can't do, these are the gaps we're going to, whatever language you want to use. And then just like was suggested, then it becomes a conversation about, well, geez, maybe that goal's not right. Maybe we, sorry, you guys have developed that, maybe we need to make these investments and make that case to all of us and bring the public along with us. So I, I think where we're trying to get to is whatever we set as the metric, and we can argue about what that can be or can't be, but I, I think we need to tie wherever we land and communicate we're going to be. If we come in ahead of that, that's a win. But if we always come in over that, that's it. And I think having a process by which, as the two budgets are being done individually, you know, and Tom, to get to your timeframe, you know, if you just present it to the finance committees, that isn't presenting it to the whole council yet, right?
No, if you don't present it to the finance committee, it needs to be done in complete.
Right, so about the 60-day trigger for the charter.
The real trigger starts when you present it. But I think what I was trying to work into the solution, at some point, however that works in the schedule, we should just get the two bodies together and say, put the number together and are we going to meet whatever the metric is or not? And at least gives us, it takes a surprise out of it. So however we do that, even if it's the day, so that's the thought.
You can make it tighter plus delta, right? So instead of 2% to 3% on either side of that, shrink it in to one and a half or whatever that looks like, but you guys can do that.
I've heard from Julie for a couple of years running, and I feel to some extent, there are certain things that we would be remiss as professionals, I think more so on the school side, almost derelict duties by not providing adequate funding for whatever is incoming or where the bearers of bad news, it's a game, inconvenient truth, we've got a big problem in our areas.
So it sounds like, yeah, process and a measure is issue. So I'm going to, we're going to move on. I think, John, go ahead quickly.
Well, just real quick, I kind of understand what Tom's saying in that, you know, his goal and responsibility is to satisfy the needs of the town. But you're giving him guidance or a financial metric to try to, you know, hit, and he typically hits it. But I think at first read, he needs to present a little more than that. And, and he wants to present something that's going to show that we're going to achieve what we're setting out to do as a town or as a school, we're going to educate our kids. And then between first and second read, how you want to go back to narrow it to get towards that guidance. And then the only other thing I wanted to comment on was, I didn't think there was a lot of discussion around the capital improvement plan this year, and I know we have one. And I think it's helpful to create some focus on that because it helps you look ahead a little bit.
We're going to jump to starts and make sure that we get into that. We'll get, you know, public comment, you know, on both stocks and starts. So let's go ahead.
Cool. So, I mean, the first one on the list is exactly what we've been talking about. I'll skip over some of these just in the interest of time. The second bullet, better define the relationship between BOE and Town Council Finance Committee. So I think one of the things that we want to do in this next workshop where we're defining goals, process, is also define what this relationship is. You know, we've had joint meetings, we had them this year, I think they had them last year as well, to varying degrees of success or productivity. As April said, we are a department of the town, so it's a bit of a unique relationship compared to the other departments. I think at the beginning, we all set out with the best of intentions with the understanding that we're in this kind of moving together in one vote. It didn't really feel like we were all in it together because whenever it relates to the school budget, it felt like we still weren't answering a lot of the same questions or, or again, there wasn't the same understanding of the school budget from the town council as there was from the school, which is fine. You guys have a lot of other departments to understand. But I, I think it was just a little bit of a false, a misconception that maybe we're in this as a team when the reality is we're still handing you this budget and saying, please, please say yes, but please say no. And so I think we need to figure out, do you, are you guys just going to tell us a goal and you want us to deliver it? That's one way. Or are we really going to work on that together? And I think defining what that relationship looks like is going to be really important to us moving forward.
Yep, that's great.
I articulate that?
Okay.
Everything else we've pretty much talked about.
Yep, we've covered a lot.
So.
Great.
Yeah. Oh, oh, sorry. I did want to say one thing regarding the timeline. The second vote of the budget is actually after the date in which ballots are available. So I think when we're looking at the timeline, we need to figure that out because that doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, this is a good point. We're trying to follow on.
Yeah.
I'm going to run through these quickly. More clarity on the budget schedule. I referenced that earlier. I, I think we need to start the collaborative work much, much earlier. And to your point, I think we need to define what that means. And in some ways, you know, there's no way getting around the fact that we still approve the budget. So is, you know, let's be realistic about, I mean, there's a way for us to collaborate, but at the end of the day, we still have an approval responsibility and role. So I don't know, you know, I, I think there's a way to do both of those and a better job, particularly in the front end, rolling up to it. Broader input and participation in goal setting, I think we touched on that pretty well earlier. Just, you know, building on the collaboration. The theme of a zero budgeting perspective, I know this is a, and I'm sensitive to what, you know, what April had said before about, you know, we can't do a 3%, you know, mill rate or 3% net, you know, or zero net budget increase, you know, or even a 3% net budget increase. We're faced with needs that increase and cost more year after year. So I, I think there's got to be some way for us to get the efficiency theme out there, you know, on the school side as well as, you know, on the town side. Now, we beat that drum repeatedly, but I, you know, hopefully there's some way for us to get at it. And then finally, long-range planning. We touched on long-range planning. John mentioned the point about capital and debt. But we've got big issues and trade-offs we have to make. Otherwise, we're going to end up, you know, really burning through a lot of debt in order to fund what we need to do in terms of essential needs, but also lots of other things that are coming down the pike, low-income housing, senior housing, you know, the downs and so forth. But I've heard a general theme about there a need to have maybe a better running monthly or quarterly handle on financials running up and through the budget process and not just starting that in January. So, so these are, these are the high points for what we could do differently next year. And now we, you know, we know there are third rails, you know, the idea about addressing the contractual obligations. I know there's all sorts of energy around that about it being hands-off, but there's still the concept of having, you know, a big chunk of the budget that we somehow can't influence is really a challenge, I think, for us to manage, at least, you know, from a town standpoint. And coming out of a private sector, you know, framework, that's, that's really, there's usually, you know, a feeling that there still should be a way to work through those trade-offs and define some favorabilities. That's the town, you know, side of things very quickly. Peter, I wanted for you to project all the harbor.
I, I think you teed on the word, just as, just as I brought up, we may not do or have done as, as well as we count on the strategic planning and debt and capital asset planning. I don't think we as a town yet have done a really good job of having trade-off conversations. You know, if we're going to, if we need to do more of something, is there something we can do less of? But what we usually do, the language we use is we start at baseline services, which means it assumes, and I'm talking about the town as well, that we're going to do everything we're doing today and then here's the additional things that we need. But part of conversations have to be, geez, as a community, and I think, and this is what you've tried to get at too, what does a community value as the most value-added services that we should do? And what services may not be as value-added? How do we have those trade-off conversations? When it comes to trade-off conversations, we've always kind of shied away from it. And that, I think, as we look to our future and the things that are coming down the pike, and if we have a downturn in the economy at some point, at some point, that's got to be part of our DNA as we approach the budget. How do we, if we do more of this, how do we do less of that? So.
I think that's.
So I don't know how we do that, but I think that's, you know, something we need to bake into sort of our conversations.
Any reactions to that comment here? We should start to get some information.
We should start to get some information around that, we do have some money, it may not be enough, but we'll find ways to stretch it as far as we can, to really do that satisfaction survey, so we don't have a good feedback loop, you know, these listening sessions, we're intended to tell them what you like and you don't like, that's really not what they ended up being.
They like everything.
Right, so it will have to be really thoughtful how we characterize and structure that, so we get meaningful input. With that, then we can assign, you know, we know the cost of those services, so we can start to have, you know, a more informed discussion around that, I suppose. But that's been a challenge for us, is if no one is telling us anything, whether, you know, whether they like it or they don't, it's really hard to know what to...
Or if the uniform looks like everything.
Right. One of the things that I take away from this is, and from our conversation last week as well, in our finance committee, is that I think that the school department can do a little bit better job articulating what our process is. Because, to my mind, we do something very similar to zero-based budgeting, it's just not in the public eye. And by the time our budget gets out to the point where we're having these conversations, it's been through a very rigorous process, but that is not visible necessarily. So, you know, one of the things that I'm thinking about as I'm hearing this feedback is, not necessarily that we would have to change our process so much, but that we would have to explain why our process is the way that it is, and how we actually do some of these things. Certainly, you know, room for feedback, but I think there are a lot of things that we're already doing that we could articulate better, and that would help the public feel more confident in our, in our outcomes.
Yeah, just building on that, I don't think we do a great job representing school issues and interests from the council side. Personally, I just don't, this past cycle, I, you know, I was not as well-informed as I need to be, as we need to be, in order to really, you know, support that and to move through that together, and just, you know...
Well, yeah, you can't advocate if you don't have an understanding of what the need is, so that's all part of this, this whole communication loop.
You took the words right off my notebook, Kate.
Great. Any other comments, final, you know, final comments here, and I want to make sure we get, Larry, you have a chance to tell us what to stop doing and do differently?
I just worked on a theory to the question I posed earlier, why was this year different? And it's a point that we talked about, maybe in communications context, but how the budget conversation starts through the media, that first article, the IC, is really important. That's the piece that stands for six or eight weeks, because nothing's done, you know, a lot of talk, but no change. And so having that headline, it would said, but I'm doing, bold the community that, alright, action has been taken, the budget meets the goal, may have had a lasting effect and produced a positive result.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess back to my point, I think, whatever goals we set, however we do that, if we can be there at the first read, I think that, that does exactly, okay, we're on target.
Because again, the final result is clearly no different than we've been for almost every year, but in terms of budget performance endpoint, but the reception is decidedly different.
Yeah, and I think, you know better than I do, but I also think this year, it actually led to, I felt like, talking with some of my colleagues on one-on-one basis, they were actually more receptive to amending investments at the end than I thought they would be, because we had met the goal, so to speak. So I think, and I think Peter's tried to reiterate this a couple times, I don't think Peter's saying, you know, meet the goal and then we do nothing between first and second reading. Meet the goal and actually trigger perhaps some really good conversation about how do we actually, convince us all that these investments are, these additional investments are appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, that was the intent, to say years, years ago, these are the investments we need to make, and then let the community move along with us, and we can educate them about what those investments are. That may, or, I think, the prior way we've done it, which, not meeting the goal at the first read, we didn't have outcomes this year, we met the goal, it was ugly how we got there.
Yeah.
But it was a smoother budget process. So the real, the real challenge will be, is how do we set reasonable goals for all of us that we feel comfortable are achievable?
Right.
And then have those dialogue.
And, not to call anybody's conversation out, but a good example of that, to me, was that, the split position, the, between community service and...
Public Works.
Thank you. Public Works. There, I, there was a, there was a point where I think that that might not have gone through, so to speak. I was, I, Peter and I had some pretty good conversations, and I wasn't 100% on board of it, I thought we had some really thoughtful arguments on why it might not be necessary. And I think ultimately, that went 7-0, because, because we had met the goal, and, you know, and it was, it was a little bit easier to say, okay, you know, we'll do this investment. But that, to me, that would be one, that would be, if that was in first reading, that probably would have been one of the first ones to go and never come back.
That's interesting perspective.
Because I, because I surely, at one point, was like, yeah, I, I don't know if this thing is absolutely necessary. So, that's just one, just to give everybody a concrete example of something that just transpired, so.
And with that, are there any other comments here in this last second? Larry, do you want to represent the public here for a few minutes? Thank you.
Larry Hartwell's Five Colby Drive. I think the matrix needs to change, the mill rate. Nobody out in the community knows what the mill rate means. When we say, oh, it's going to go, the mill rate's going to, we're going to keep the mill rate at 3%, people understand, oh, I have a budget of $1,000, and I'm spending 1,100 this year, that's a 10% increase. Dollars and percentages of increase, people understand that more than a mill rate. And now with this revaluation going on, what's the mill rate going to mean? Nothing, it's going to be irrelevant. I mean, you're not going to be able to make any comparison with what the mill rate was this year, and, and compare that to what the spending is. So I think, and I think the council in other towns, they set the, they look at, they look at not wants and needs, but they look at the taxpayers, like, how much can we increase the spending in this town? What can we support for spending? And so, they will come back and say, okay, maybe it's 6%, 5% increase in spending. Everyone understands that. The school board, the public works department, community services understands what 6% is. We have two administrators, and we've had good ones, in respective finances, with the superintendent over the school department, and knowing that better than anyone else, better than the council or the school board. We have a town manager, he understands all the other departments, as it's been said tonight, on many occasions, Tom brings it in at what is, has been set by the council. The school superintendent could do the same thing, you'd have the marching orders at the beginning of the year, okay, it's 6%. Both the town side and the school side, the biggest part of the budget for both of them is across employer, is people, and everyone's covered by a contract. They all have kind of a similar benefit package, and steps and so forth. So I don't know why the school is, thinks it's so much different in that respect. So I think if that was set out at the beginning, that would be a much better way to go for matrix, metrics. And like I say, the council simply setting the, as Peter said several times, you set a goal at the beginning of the year, and you kept it. That kind of makes a lot of people in the community happy and not upset. The school, okay, let's say it's 6%, and you bring it in, and you say, okay, we've had all these other things that have occurred, we've had increases in enrollment, special, special services, asbestos has showed up and so forth, okay, we did, we kept everything else at 6%, but we have these, these things that have come along, that weren't planned for, couldn't be anticipated, and then have a discussion on that. So I think that might, those are some ideas. You talked about the neighborhood meetings and the attendance being down, and it was, certainly was down last year, or, the previous year was higher, but still lower. I think when we had the budget, the budget meeting, the one budget meeting at the high school, that we had better attendance. And from everyone that sits at the table here, you only had one night of commitment as opposed to all the different, different meetings you showed up at. So that's, that seemed to work as far as getting better attendance than what we've seen from the neighborhood ones the last couple, three years, so you might want to consider that again. As I said, we kept, a stated goal was, was met, it wasn't pretty, there was some, I call it sleight of hand, Tom, I'm going to be upset with that one, but we will, we will, we moved things from the operating budget to the capital budget. And so then we can pull down the rate, but we've, you know, we've only moved the debt or the expenditure from one pocket to the other. I think we need to do a better job of that. A couple, three, a couple of years ago, the school budget was, the request was cut by like a million and a half dollars or thereabouts. I remember asking Ruth after a meeting, I said, nothing really got cut, right, Ruth? It just moved from operating to CIP? And she says, yes, Larry, that's exactly right. So better honesty and transparency on that would certainly be a positive thing. Part of the divisiveness this year was by members of the town council. And I hear a lot of divisiveness as we, in this community, we use that phrase a lot, but we have a lot of larger participation in this town, in town government, in voting than in other communities. So some call it divisiveness, I call it democratic participation, so. And I want to thank everyone at this table, everyone's been open this past year, your doors have been open, you've been able, more than willing to, to hear comments, criticisms, and have a, have a dialogue, and I appreciate that. It's a thankless job, and there's a gazillion hours spent on it, and I look forward to Katie serving another term.
Here, here.
So with that, we ran a little bit over, but I want to thank everybody for the work they did running up to this, and everyone's engagement and contributions, you know, it's a good discussion, and, you know, full and fair, so thanks, everybody.
To close, I just want to make sure that we, we'll just leave it here, and that we have some concrete actions. And we can talk about these offline, but the three workshops that I noted, so one on long-range planning, strategic debt planning, which I think sits with the town council, one that's a joint finance committee workshop, which is the budget development process and goal setting, and then the other, there's a lot of things in there around communication and outreach, and so I think we should have another joint session to really figure out what resources we have available to us, and how we can leverage those moving forward. So those are the three, and I don't know if anyone else jotted out any other concrete actions or workshops.
One thing we had suggested doing was to somehow report out on this, or, you know, if we're going to really actually try to get an earlier start on the budget season, you know, to talk about, about that with, you know, in a workshop prior to a town council meeting, if that is still something that would make sense, you know, and maybe use more detail on the things that we highlighted, in terms of what we might do differently, building on some of the things. But so there would be work required for us rolling up to those, but I know, Tom, when you and I talked about it, we thought maybe something, I mean, September's going to be a motion.
I think you need to do it September, October.
Yeah.
The reality is, in spite of everyone's best intentions, November's lost, December's the holidays, we just get back to business in mid-January.
So all thinking on is, to do to make sure we get that on the calendar, that we get another round like this, you know, and we figure out how to action the work that we've identified between now and then, you know, maybe that's the beginning, the official launch of the budget season.
I'd like to just state that I'd be willing to do a joint workshop on goal setting in August, if everyone's willing to.
Okay.
I think do August, but I would do early September, yeah.
Okay, so let's...
That'd be great.
All right.
But I would, let me think, I think my preference would be to start with the joint finance committee.
Yeah.
And then bring that back to the broader group.
Yes, that's what I was, that's what I meant.
Do you guys agree with this?
Right, yes.
Instead of bringing, if you've got too many voices...
So you want to do a round of joint finance committees in September?
That also makes sense, the light of elections, because you can start the conversation, but you don't have to finish it till after the election.
Yeah.
Yeah, joint finance committees.
We've got a number of them.
Right, so we'll target joint finance committee session in September, rolling up to town council workshop sometime, you said could be after, after the election. I'm just trying to think of what would be the, we want to kick off the budget season before you know what's happening.
I think the goal-setting piece might be problematic, if you set a goal now, it could have different people around the table, so.
Full set.
But there's some other things, such as budget process and timing, that are more kind of administrative, that could stand the test of time.
So let's...
Yeah, and you can start, and you can still start the conversation, you just don't have to set.
Yeah, so I guess I...
You can carry the metrics.
Right, I guess I'd push back on that a little bit, I think, if we can have homework, if everybody present their own idea, just to get the conversation, I'm not saying we have to formalize anything, but just have, give members of the committees homework to come with their goal idea.
So why don't we try to work out an agenda, that we can socialize something that would have detail, and then, you know, be clear about the work required between now and then, the September joint can come around. But I want to thank everybody who started and now knows where to go.
Don, I had heard that they might be interested in trying to get the full school board and town council in, you know, to cover some of the similar territory, I think that's challenging. Is it possible to combine the two documents that we reviewed tonight, as in one deposit?
Sure.
And we can, we can each report them out to explain to...
I'll take that on.
We've shared this with the board, I was going to give them an update anyways, but...
I'll put it in one document.
Blended one, yeah.
Yep, I think that's great, great.
And circulate with everybody. Thanks very much.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Enjoy summer, July's coming up.